CN 601, like to start the Freetown Lakeville Regional School Committee meeting for November 12, 2025. First item on the agenda, we will go into executive session to return. We'll need a roll call for that. Ms. Rodericks, please.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Bob Clark.
Yes.
Carolina Hernandez.
Yes.
Courtney Brightman.
Yes.
Tim Emery.
Yes.
And we will return to formal session immediately following executive session. Should not be long.
You have to say the purpose.
The purpose of the executive session is reason number two, strategy with respect to non-union negotiations or to conduct collective bargaining session with non-union personnel. Excuse me for interim superintendent. Thank you.
Jordan, definitely gets the art room vibe. She comes to visit me multiple times a day just because the art room is so awesome.
Thank you for having us.
Do you think we could get a picture of everybody together holding up their art?
Just before you leave, where's Jordan? Jordan, come back? How about if you hold that artwork up nice and high so that everybody can see it? Oh, look at that.
Here comes Jordan.
Here comes Jordan, she's going to join you.
While you're getting ready, thank you for your creativity and your communication skills are outstanding. Great job.
Any questions for our students before they go?
Questions, comments?
They were great.
Outstanding.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. You're welcome to head out this evening. We know you have other obligations or you're heading home to make a bedtime even. Thank you very much for being here. If we're moving on in the agenda?
Yes.
Our next item of business is a DECA overnight out-of-state field trip request. You might remember last month, we had several of those. These are two additions. One is for the DECA Sports and Entertainment Marketing Conference in Orlando, Florida, from January 28th through February 1st. And the second one is to the DECA Providence Bruins Night in Providence, Rhode Island. Details are in your packet, but we'll be looking for a vote to approve both of those this evening.
Right, at the end of.
Yeah, that will be an action item vote at the end of the meeting.
Okay. B, student representative report.
Good evening, everyone. The past couple of months have been extremely eventful here at Uponaquit. We welcomed the incoming eighth graders when they came to their eighth grade orientation here. Members of the Akushna community also visited, as well as many of the clubs here at Uponaquit hosted various events. This past weekend, the Uponaquit players hosted members of the community for their fall play. The play had a great turnout, made a lot of money selling raffle tickets and T-shirts. The robotics club is growing fast. The club started with only two members and now has a consistent attendance of nine or more students. They are exploring possible fundraising opportunities to raise money for competitive enhancements for the robots, the new VEX Robotics Competition Game Kit, entry fees in buses for future competitions. Students have expressed interest in hosting local schools at ARHS to compete in these VRC games and building obstacle courses for their robots. Everything is an exploration phase as the club tries to align their needs with their goals, but they are making good progress, and of course, building robots. I am excited to welcome our second student representative, Molly McCarthy, who is able to join us now that her volleyball season is over. Without further ado, I will let Molly take over.
Hi, I'm Molly McCarthy. It is an honor to be here with you guys tonight, and it is a pleasure to represent Uponaquit's student body. As Cam mentioned before, I am on the volleyball team and I am in the senior class. Additionally to volleyball, I am in student government where I am the class's vice president. I'm also a member of student council. I do DECA, Laker Leaders, and our newly-founded club, OSA. To keep you guys updated on some Uponaquit happenings, on Monday, the Unified Basketball Team ended their successful season with their end-of-season jamboree at Dartmouth High School. The winter sports season kicks off right after Thanksgiving break on December 1st. Our winter teams will also be hosting their informational meetings in the upcoming weeks for returning and new players alike. DECA will also kick off their competitive season at the district conference on Cape Cod at the beginning of January. This week, students of Uponaquit are gearing up for homecoming, which takes place this Friday at Venus de Milo in Swansea. In preparation, this week was Spirit Week, where students wore PJs on Monday and brought a stuffed animal. Anything but a backpack day today to raise money for a local charity. And we have Week Day and also Class Color. Student Council will be running the pep rally on Friday. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Molly. Welcome and great job, and thank you, Cam, as always. Great job. Right now, we move to 5C, the interim superintendent's report.
All right, and I am going to very quickly turn our spotlight over to Principal Sullivan, who is here to announce some very special people from Grace who are here to give you a presentation this evening.
Hello. Thank you for having the intermediate school here tonight to spotlight. We are very excited to share some beautiful artwork created by some of our remarkable students in Mrs. Bossino's art class. Intermediate school students see the art teacher on a four-day rotation, so Mrs. Bossino and her three special subject colleagues teach every child in fourth and fifth grade. I want to emphasize how important the art program is to our school community. For some of our students, art class is the highlight of their day. It's what gets them excited to come to school. I personally have seen countless students over the years who struggle in other areas, but you get them in the art room and put a paintbrush in their hand or a lump of clay and they absolutely light up. So I'd like to introduce Mrs. Bossino and seven of our young artists, so they have some beautiful work to share with you.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Bossino. I have been teaching art at the intermediate school for almost 18 years now. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight the art program at Grace. If not, you can do a quick little Google search and find out that it improves academic performance, it boosts problem-solving and critical thinking skills, it improves hand-eye coordination and fine motor skills, it helps develop emotional intelligence, increases empathy, tolerance, helps develop cognitive function, enhances memory retention, and greater attention to detail. It fosters creativity and imagination, it increases cultural awareness, and it improves school engagement. Pretty awesome. I wanted to touch on the last point specifically, though. I think specials are really important for children of all ages, K through 12. They give many of our students motivation to come to school every day. When students come to school, it obviously leads to better attendance, better academic performance, and increased confidence and self-esteem. It can transform school from a chore into something fun that they want to participate in. It fosters motivation and curiosity that extends beyond graduation into their adult lives and careers. So with that, I would love to give my, create some of my creative students an opportunity to say a little something about why they like making art and why they like coming to art.
Hello.
Hi, Jordan.
Hi, Jordan.
My name is Jordine Gallagher. I am a fifth grader at Gray, and I'm a Free Lake staff kid. My favorite special is art. Mrs. B is a creative and calming teacher. Mrs. B makes sure that my friends and I can always do the art project. Mrs. B always lets me visit during the day, even if I'm having a long day going to visit her makes me happy. I love that. Thank you for your time. Goodbye.
Thank you, Jordan.
Jordan definitely gets the art room vibe. She comes to visit me multiple times a day just because the art room is so awesome. All right. Claire, would you like to start as well?
Hi, my name is Nadari. I'm in the fifth grade. Some things we do in art I can't do at home, so I value my art time.
Hi, my name's Alia Capolino. I'm in fifth grade. I like art because it expresses my feelings in a way words can't.
Hi, my name is Logan, and I love art. And Mrs. Bossino is so a really nice teacher. She helps me when I'm having trouble, and it's really fun.
My name's Bridgette Follows, and I'm in fourth grade. And I love art because it helps me be more creative.
I'm Gavin De Souza. I love art because it's very stress-free, so I can just have fun.
Hi, my name is Kirk Goslin. I love art because it lets me express all of my creativity, and I never have to be worried about if I'm doing anything right or wrong.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Bravo.
Do you think we could get a picture of everybody together holding up their art?
Yeah.
Just before you leave, where's Jordan? Jordan, come back? How about if you hold that artwork up nice and high so that everybody can see it? Oh, look at that.
Here comes Jordan.
Here comes Jordan, she's going to join you.
While you're getting ready, thank you for your creativity, and your communication skills are outstanding. Great job.
There we go. All right, one, two, three, three, three. There are one of those. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good job.
Do you have questions for our students before they go?
Questions, comments?
They were great.
Outstanding.
Awesome.
Agreed.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. You're welcome to head out this evening. We know you have other obligations or you're heading home to make a bedtime even. Thank you very much for being here. If we're moving on in the agenda?
Yes.
Our next item of business is a DECA overnight out-of-state field trip request. You might remember last month, we had several of those. These are two additions. One is for the DECA Sports and Entertainment Marketing Conference in Orlando, Florida, from January 28th through February 1st. And the second one is to the DECA Providence Bruins Night in Providence, Rhode Island. Details are in your packet, but we'll be looking for a vote to approve both of those this evening.
Right, at the end of.
Yep, any questions? Okay, moving right along. We have a donation request, looking for you to accept an acoustic guitar and several sets of golf clubs that have been deemed to be very useful for both our music and athletic departments, and I'm imagining maybe even the golf team. So we'd be looking for you to accept those donations tonight. I just should say out loud publicly, we often accept donations from the community, but we do vet the equipment before it comes in. So these pieces have been looked at by our music teachers at the high school and by our athletic department.
I'd like to assign our student representative, Mr. Poria, to assess the golf.
The golf equipment, right? Any questions? All right, if there are no questions, we'll move right along. It's my pleasure tonight to announce that because we received recognition for our progress in math, MCAS scores from grades three through eight, our principal, Michael Ward, and several teachers, Mrs. Falzone, Mrs. Reese, and Mrs. Pelletier, will be representing the district at a DESI-sponsored conference. Quite an honor for them to be able to attend and collaborate with other teachers and other administrators about successes for MCAS. We're really excited to be able to send them to that day. And I think Terry's going to talk to you a little bit more about MCAS later on in the presentation, but shout out to Principal Ward and the teachers who he'll be bringing to represent us.
Great job. Outstanding.
Make sure Mr. Ward buys lunch.
I think DESI's buying lunch. I think our new commissioner, Pedro Martinez, will be buying lunch for us.
Oh, wow.
So just a, moving right along, the next thing we have is an enrollment update for you. We're continuing to examine enrollment, and I had spoken to you earlier this year about an exit survey, and we have that pretty close to completion. I'll be sharing that with you at an up-and-coming meeting, but we did share some statistics with you right now. In total, we're at 2,645 students. We are, we're over our total from the previous month by at least eight students, if my math is correct, by eight students. So you can always click on that link, and that will give you open access to enrollment. We fill it in monthly. We're trying to look for any trends that we can see. In red, you have the numbers where there is a drop. In green, you have the numbers where there's an increase, and then in black is everything that's static. So stay tuned for more information from us regarding enrollment, unless you have any questions right now? Okay, thank you very much. Moving right along, we're looking for reapproval, really, of our handbooks. Most recently, our handbooks were reviewed as part of a tiered focus monitoring review process that I believe Kelly Steele maybe had mentioned to you back in August. And it was noted that in a few of our handbooks, we had, we had some missing information, so we took liberties and we added the AI policy that you had previously voted on. And then we had added some other policies to the handbooks to make sure that we were meeting all of our DESI requirements. So suspension and due process, thank you for correcting that, Mr. Higgins, suspension and due process wasn't specifically outlined to regulation in each of the handbooks, so we made sure that was up to date. We have policies pertaining to mass general law, again, related to suspension, that we wanted to make sure we're up to date with the changes in the law. We are required to provide an educational service plan to any student who is suspended. That's been our practice here in the district, but we hadn't had them codified in our handbooks, especially our handbooks for our younger students, right? The high school handbooks had all of these things, and you'll notice that FES, AES, and Grace didn't have those, so we had to bring them up to snuff. And then, for some reason, the Grace handbook was missing its section on student records. So we thank DESI for its keeping us accountable, and those are all of the areas of the handbooks that have been updated. You have full and updated copies of those handbooks in your packets, and we'll be looking for you to vote to approve those tonight. Pending your approval, we will not send them out to parents again, but there will be a notification in my ripple report this week, and all of the handbooks will be updated online, so parents can take a look at those.
Great.
If you have no questions, I'll move right along to the last thing for me, and that was my formative, my formative assessment. So as you all know, the subcommittee for my formative assessment or for my evaluation met on October 29th. I linked in there the rubric for you, and that is public information, the rubric by which I'm being evaluated on. At that meeting, I gave an overview of progress toward attainment of goals, and then each of the four areas of standards presented to the committee. but there will be a notification in my ripple report this week, and all of the handbooks will be updated online, so parents can take a look at those.
Great.
We have no questions, I'll move right along to the last thing for me. And that was my formative, my formative assessment. So as you all know, the subcommittee for my formative assessment or for my evaluation met on October 29th. I linked in there the rubric for you, and that is public information, the rubric by which I'm being evaluated on. At that meeting, I gave an overview of progress to our attainment of goals. And then each of the four areas of standards presented to the committee that night with two to three pieces of evidence of each of the 41 elements, along with an accompanying explanation of each. So I think that Mr. Clark and Mr. Sovaia and Mrs. Richards, who isn't with us this evening, spent a good amount of time taking a look at that binder. It was pretty significant. And I'm open to any questions you might have tonight about the information.
Great, and you're right, we met the last week in October. We had a very productive meeting. And I will say, it was the most thorough and appropriately presented book of evidence I've ever seen in my life. So it was, great job, well done. The committee got together and we looked at your three goals and your performance against all the standards, and made some recommendations as a starting point. If this committee remembers, we went back to, we did a two-year cycle previously. But when you started, we adopted the one-year cycle, having the formative take place early in the fall, which is today, and then the summative, which will complete in March. So getting right into it as part of the public discussion, we had approved your goals early in September. Actually, it was the last week in August, I believe. You submitted a professional practice goal where you will lead the development of a multi-year, three-year budget projection process that aligns the district resources with strategic priority, supports long-range planning, and enhances transparency in decision-making for stakeholders. That obviously covers some focus indicators in the superintendent's rubric. We provided a bit of a summary and an entry point for discussion that the subcommittee recommends that you're progressing as it relates to that goal. Discussion, edits, comments from any members on the professional practice goal.
I reviewed the formative assessment earlier today, and it seemed to cover everything. It looked good to me. I don't really have any edits to it. I think Dr. Starkey's done a great job, and I think the subcommittee did a great job putting this together.
Thank you. I can go goal by goal, or we can progress to the standards. Why don't we just, we'll do the professional practice goal, too. The superintendent will lead a comprehensive review and improvement of the human resource systems to ensure clear, equitable, and efficient hiring, onboarding, evaluation, and personnel management processes aligned with the district goals and legal requirements. The subcommittee recommends we are also progressing with this goal. Dr. Starkey, with notable evidence, including your implementation of equitable and transparent practices, strengthened onboarding and evaluation systems, you provided great evidence supporting that goal. Any discussions on the human resource-related goal? Or edits to the subcommittee's recommendations? Hearing none. We now have our district improvement student learning goal, where we will implement and sustain a consistent schedule of school and classroom visits across all grade levels to deepen instructional awareness, build trust with educators, students, and families, and strengthen district-wide instructional coherence and culture. Subcommittee is also recommending progressing at this point in the process, and notes that Dr. Starkey is well on track to meeting and/or exceeding all three of the goals. Discussion or edits to the presentation? Dr. Starkey's performance against the standards, instructional leadership. The committee appreciates our visible commitment to instructional excellence and our ability to connect with educators and students in meaningful ways. There is a tremendous amount of evidence for all of that. We are recommending proficient against that standard with notable evidence, including administrator evaluations, consistency of classroom visits, the changes to the program studies, the school improvement plans with the three-year cycle, and all the data and effort, including not only you, Dr. Starkey, and your team, with data for the bus transportation work that you did at the beginning of the year, and decisions related to that. Discussions, edits on that standard. Standard two, management and operations. Subcommittee is also recommending proficient. The committee especially values your proactive approach to budgeting, transparency, and decision-making, and commitment to supporting staff through clear systems and ongoing professional growth. These efforts have strengthened day-to-day operations while positioning the district for long-term stability and success. Notable evidence under this standard, your focus on facilities, the oversight that comes with that, capital planning, and providing support and recommendations around the district. Discussion, edits? Standard three, family and community engagement. The subcommittee is also recommending, Dr. Starkey, to be proficient with some exemplary indicators under this standard. Notable evidence includes the cushion of presentation, newsletters, recognizing the ripple, and meetings with PTOs, just to name a few. We know exemplary performance in the area of family engagement and student support, where your visibility, accessibility, and genuine care have strengthened trust and fostered a sense of belonging across the district. Your leadership has elevated the community confidence in the district's direction and created a collaborative culture grounded in respect, partnership, and shared purpose. Discussion or edits around that standard. Finally, standard four, professional culture. Subcommittee is recommending proficient. Notable evidence includes the Recognize the Ripple initiative, enrollment data tracking, school committee meetings. We have plenty of evidence of that. Your capital planning survey, summer institute. And we especially enjoyed the recognition of retirements at a school committee meeting at the beginning of the year in addition to hearing from students about their experience coming back to school and the first day of school. Again, recommending proficient as it relates to standard four, professional culture. Discussion, edits on that piece of the presentation? Finally, I'll just read what the committee is recommending for the formative summary. Your leadership these last three months has helped to strengthen fiscal transparency, improved human resource systems, and deepened instructional awareness through consistent school and classroom engagement. The committee recognizes and values the significant progress made under your leadership and looks forward to continued growth, collaboration, and the opportunity to review the full outcomes and performance of your goals against the standards during the summative fates. Thank you for your leadership, dedication, and professionalism. Comments, discussion, edits? This requires, the next step, I think, through the chair, we'll meet signatures and we'll come up with a final draft. I'll share it with the full committee, and we'll go from there. Any further discussion?
It looked good to me. One thing I did want to call out, since it's in here, is the transportation. That was a very hot topic, and I've received far fewer complaints this year than I did last year. And as a parent, I can also say that I've received far fewer emails from Mr. Ward this year than I did last year. So that was a very hot topic, and I think it was a very important topic. And I think the changes that were implemented really helped this year.
That's good to say. So the inbox is tied to performance.
Noted.
Right, well, thank you for everything.
Thank you, and I just respond with it, it takes a team. It's not the work of just one person. So the folks sitting here right at this table, I deserve it, deserve just as much thanks as I do. But I do appreciate your recognition of the work that we've done in a very short period of time. I'd also like to thank the teachers in the district, the students and the families for their support.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you and the team. We are in a good place.
Right. Well, then, let's keep.
Next item.
Let's keep right on moving then. We turn things over to Terry Fleming.
Okay. Tonight, we have a couple of second readings. Our proposed update to the competency determination policy, IKFE, second reading. As a reminder, this moved us from simply having to address passing courses to addressing mastery. And the high school has put in place a new policy, pending the approval tonight, of making sure that our students are demonstrating mastery as well as completing courses. Were there any questions on that from last time to this time?
Not for me.
And then, policy IKF, our second reading, is our update to graduation policy. And again, it refers to not, it does not, it removed the language of passing MCAS and inserted the meeting competency determination language. Any questions on that?
Not for me. Seeing none.
Okay, the next part requires you to click through some slides as I'm sharing. The MCAS results from the spring of 2025 are in front of you. I've part and parceled out some things. On slides two through 13, you'll see that our Free Town Lakeville students continue to score above the state with shout-outs to our math across the board. Grade three, in particular, was 18% above the state in meeting and exceeding expectations. And biology was 29% above the state in meeting and exceeding expectations. So those first slides recognize the hard work across the district in staying above the state average. And then I'd also like to additionally recognize our eighth-grade students and teachers. They are 13% above the state in the inaugural year of the civics assessment. So congratulations to them. And then, as you continue to move through the slides, 14 through 28, show how our students do as a cohort from their prior year. I like to do apples to apples. That's the apples-to-apples slide there. So you can see on those next slides how our students did as third graders, then taking it as fourth graders, or fourth graders as fifth graders, and so on. And you will see slight shifts, but we're going to give some shout-outs to the eighth-grade students overall. They show significant growth through the middle school. So our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade programming has shown a significant growth towards meeting and exceeding in all areas. And then, our 10th-grade ELA and science assessments continue to show a steady increase from those eighth-grade scores to the 10th-grade scores. Slide 29 has links to writing samples. And I just want to note that across the Commonwealth, we anticipated and were not surprised to see that writing scores were decreased by over 6% across the Commonwealth. Students did, we had students that did really well in one essay and then didn't put a lot of effort into the second essay due to that measure to, I'm sure, ballot question. And so you'll see some writing sample links there. It shows what the kids have to go through. There's not just the writing. Writing isn't just sitting there, writing on a piece of paper now. They really have to go through that technology and scroll down through 66 paragraphs, whether they're small or large, and refer back to them when they're doing their written essays. And so if you're intrigued by that, those links are on there. And then, slide 30 is a reminder how we use the released items. So we go through the released items, item analysis documents, as our staff look at those. And we also were given the student essays this year. So the ELA curriculum leaders have looked at those essays. The principals have looked at those essays. And we've talked about how to build the structure of just simply making sure that the kids are renewing their knowledge of conventions to building content and structured essays from K to 12. Slides 31 to 35 hold the glows and grores from each building, and there was a lot to be proud of. So as you glance through those, each building had a lot of things to be proud of and shared those with us. And then, slide 36 shows our accountability calculation, some of the areas that we're receiving our highest scores. And then, because you will hear this from the state level, I want to make sure to not leave it off. Slides 37 to 43 give grade-level comparisons. So the big topic right now at the state level is, how are our kids doing compared to prior to COVID, pre-COVID? So on those slides, you'll see the 2019 results and our current results. Unfortunately, the state is looking at it as a grade level. So you're not looking at a cohort. We're not looking at how our kids from 2019 are now doing currently. We're looking at, how did grade-three students do in 2019? And how did grade-three students do in 2025? So it's a little bit off, and I did color-code these backgrounds for you. The red is showing that we are behind pre-COVID, and the blue is showing that we are ahead of pre-COVID. So you see a little mix, and of course, our math was well ahead of pre-COVID. Some of the honors that Dr. Starkey was speaking of stem from that. So there's a lot, and there's a lot more. I geeked out for a long time on the data. So, but there's a lot more to it, but I thought this was a nice little package of information. This is all available on the DESI website as well. But we have spent countless hours talking with curriculum leaders, building principals, and staff on what we're going to do to keep pushing forward.
And the next rung of that is to make sure that we're talking to the students, too, right? Not just instructionally, but reminding them that it's incorrect that the test doesn't count anymore. So we're kind of battling that, right? Because students have this feeling, community members have the feeling that the test doesn't matter because that's the result of the vote, right? But we want to make a concerted effort to make sure our students understand that their testing still matters. And we'll review some of those points at a meeting here, so it's stated publicly. But we're meeting with the principals soon and taking information from students. For example, at our last series of roundtables, we were asking the kids, how can we get the message out that taking the MCAS and doing well on it still matters? It matters for you individually, in particular, if you're at the high school, if you're looking for scholarship money, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship money. And it matters to you all the way across because they're indicators, they're benchmarks of your learning. And then they help the district guide instruction. So again, we can get more into that at another meeting. But to Terry's point, you know, we've made the rounds talking to people about this, and we need to make sure that our students and our community members are aware as well.
Great.
I want to thank Terry for her presentation. She could have had hundreds of slides for you this evening. We're going to be sharing this presentation on our site, but Terry has done an amazing job going through all of the data and making sure that the people who need to have the data and then use it to impact instruction or use it to work specifically with subgroups of kids have that information.
Great.
And I'd like to give a thank you and a shout-out to my, I'll say my right hand, probably, my left hand, maybe. But Aly Cassidy does a great job working with me on data crunching numbers, and she loves to just sit and brainstorm with me through them. So she's a wonderful asset to our district and is not out in front of people, but she certainly is, like, strong in my corner. And then, the last thing I have on mine is, we applied for and have been approved to receive $14,000 in funds from the state for MYCAP planning and implementation grant. This was available to all Massachusetts Public School districts. They awarded over $800,000. We were approved for $14,000, which covers the cost to create and develop a six-through-12 scope and sequence for MYCAP. MYCAP has to do with students' college and career planning. So it has that, you know, what path am I looking for to take once I get out of high school? It'll cover release time for staff, substitutes, so that staff can have site visits, marketing materials for new programming, like our innovative career pathways and our Project Lead the Way programs. And then compensation for staff for outside-of-contract time meetings and the specific development of a scope and sequence, six-through-12. We have a large team that's involved in this. It includes our high school and middle school administration. It includes all of our guidance counselors from the middle school and high school and our adjustment counselors. And then, currently, we have eight teachers from the high school that are involved, and we're looking to then build middle school teachers into the layer as well. Super excited about this, and so we're asking for approval, acceptance of that.
Great.
There are no questions?
Yeah, no, just a comment from me. Congratulations on that. And then, again, thank you for all the work on the MCAS. You certainly break it down to make it easy. The extra effort on the cohort stuff is appreciated. Just one question. Do remind me, I can't remember if everyone has to participate in the vocal survey? The culture?
So we do not opt into that.
Okay.
We could opt into it, and it certainly would provide data extensively above and beyond just academic data for us. But we have not participated, and I would love to have that conversation.
So I don't have a strong opinion either way, but I see it in real time with our student presenters and what we see come before the committee all the time, that my sense is that the culture and climate is really high. So maybe it is a discussion we have to look at that, just to see. Because we see it in real time, and I'm sure the teachers and parents and you see it daily, but it might be something.
It would give everyone a voice, right?
Absolutely.
It would give everyone a voice for that.
In the areas we might need to amp up a little bit.
Sure thing. Sure thing. This side of the table will be very much in support of the students engaging in the vocal survey.
Okay. To be continued.
Be continued. I might note that. There are no questions, we'll move on to Jack Higgins.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to provide you an update on the FY '26 budget. Your monthly general fund summary is in your packet for your review. But in addition to that, as we closely monitor expenditures across all areas, I think it's important to note that we have seen our special education costs higher than expected due to student, changes in student needs since after the adoption of the budget. Notably, transportation as a result of some student additions, unexpected student additions, but also in addition to that, requirements as a result of health or behavioral need to split students. We were expecting to be able to ride two students in a van or three students in a van, and then necessary for us to put them on separate vans. So the transportation costs have gone up as a result. In addition to that, we had, we've had out of state move ins. In the case of an out of state move in, the reason why that's important to note is that if it's from out of state and they are an out of district placement, then we don't get the relief of the first year being paid by the district that they're coming from. And then in addition to that, we've had some placement changes where the costs have gone up as a result of those placement changes. So we are utilizing, we'll be utilizing circuit breaker funds to make up that difference, but understanding that that's circuit breaker funds that we had not originally allotted or prepared for. So we will be utilizing some of the funds that we would be expecting to use for next year. So that's important to keep in mind. We'll also be considering applying for extraordinary relief at the end of this year for any of those expenditures that are, could be considered extraordinary relief. We could be receiving those funds, reimbursement funds that we would get next year, we could receive them this year to balance it out. For anybody who's driven by the FES playground recently, on the week of October 20th, we had, after several weeks of delays due to weather, we had, we contracted with Reel and Associates, which is a company on the state bid list that does playground installations as well as playground evaluations. They installed for us the equipment that the FES PTO had donated to the district as well as donated the cost of the installation. It's a shade structure, a ball game that, where you can see in the picture, the orange ball game, throw the ball in the funnel, and it pops out in one of three locations. And then there's a balance beam, zigzag balance beam as well. All three were successfully installed the week ahead of October 20th, and we are happy that the students are now able to participate and use those things. The shade structure is really going to be very helpful when we get into the spring. And thank you again to the FES PTO for their generosity in both the donation as well as the cost of the installation. If you'll remember a few weeks ago, actually a few months ago now, we had Sullivan Gray, who's a life scout with Lakeville Troop 26, who was presenting his Eagle Scout project for approval. He has completed the project, and those of you who've driven around the campus, you can see it with the posts have all been painted, not only the guardrail posts, but also all of the yellow bollards that we have around the district to protect sensitive equipment. In total, there were 429 posts painted. There were, they also relabeled the posts that we utilized with numbers for fire drills outside of the high school for rallying points, overseeing 145 volunteer hours. For an Eagle Scout project, the key, the most important part is the oversight and the leadership, not so much actually the hours, but the oversight hours. So it's, I think it's important to note that he led 145 man-hours worth of volunteers, which was fantastic. And then he's donating with a vote, donating two gallons of paint, one brown, one yellow for touch-ups as we need, as necessary.
We should have kept him on the hook for the touch-ups.
Yes.
Were you, if you were able to paint the last post?
Well, you were only painting the last post if he ran out of time.
So it's interesting. There is actually, after the completion of the project, there is still one post that needs to be painted. It's right out in front, and once they repaired it, now it can use paint. So I have the paint, and I have the bushes.
We'll get pictures.
Please.
But we thank Sullivan, that was a big one.
Yes, it really was. It really made a big difference on the campus. An update on the Grace Pool engineering assessment. If you recall, due to chronic issues related to filtration and chlorination, the Grace Pool was closed during the summer of 2024. In the spring, the Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee voted to have an engineering assessment completed, which was done over the summer, and we received the report on October 15th of this year. Some of the pictures you can see on the board behind me that were included as part of the assessment. Many of you had done walkthroughs prior, so you had seen some of these things before. From the assessment, which we received, you can click to the next one, from Aquatica Pools, Inc., the engineering company that did the assessment, they have a summary of recommendations. First of all, an overall assessment of the pool is in fair to poor condition. The items that they identified in need of repair, the stainless steel gutter return is in poor condition. The pool equipment room is dangerous and should be secured. We can go back to the pictures, I could show you those things. Pool filtration and recirculation should be replaced. It's due to age or it's undersized. And the reconstruction of the pool deck and the drainage system, it's according to what the assessment says is that there's a need for an adjustment to the, for the drainage due to code. There is a single drain which was within code when the pool was originally built, but it is required now to have two drains for safety purposes so that someone can't get stuck on the bottom of the pool. As it is right now, we have a particular safety cover to the single that allows us to still operate the pool, but the recommendation would be to go to the code of two main drains. Replacing the pool piping, replace the pool lift, which is in need of replacement. And then one of the recommendations they have is also is to altering the depths of the shallow and deep ends, though that is an additional recommendation, not one necessarily to meet code. The estimated cost to restore to good condition is stated in the assessment is $1,323,550.
Jack, real quick, is that, is that a range, or is that the?
That's at the, that's at the high end. That includes all of the recommendations, including those things that they identified, like the reducing the depth of the deep end and increasing the depth of the shallow end. Those are, those are included in that number.
And I'm sure we'll hear more from the pool committee at some point, but is it as simple as a menu item and you can pick off different things, or?
I, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I'm sure you can do some things, but there might be, without knowing for sure, I would have to assume that there are some things that could be done and just checked, and others that would rely on each other for the repair.
I guess we'll wait to hear from the pool committee on that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the 1.3 million is just to get the pool usable. Is the pool subcommittee also going to be giving us estimates for what it's going to cost not only to get it working so people can use it, but what it's going to cost each month to maintain this? Is that something that you're?
I will say that's coming in the pool committee update shortly.
Okay.
A brief description of it, but yes, part of our process.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
And then moving right along to Kelly Steele.
All right, so our student services update. I'm sorry, I'm still a little bit sick, so I'm going to speak as loud as I can. We are up 10 students total in the district from the start of the school year. This is our lowest increase typically. These are students that were probably referred in the spring, were tested September, mid-October, and then we had meetings towards the end of October. So these aren't any referrals from this year, these are mainly referrals from the end of last year. It's a typical pattern, so you'll just see that our Assawamse and FES, those are our biggest increases, they typically are. Those are our kids that are being first identified either last year and then now starting into this year. I expect those numbers always to be higher than the others. Graze is status quo at this point in time, and then one down at FLMS and ARHS, one was a move out, and one didn't qualify at reevaluation. So those were those numbers, and then our out of district has remained the same. I know Jack had mentioned a move in, but we've also had a move out, but that doesn't necessarily mean the tuitions are even because it depends on the program and things like that. So we don't have an increase in students, we just have a change in service at times. So overall, our district is at, like I said, plus 10, and we're on track. I projected about 563 students total for the district in special education by the end of the school year, and my numbers are still kind of sitting where I would expect them to be. So that's where we are in special ed, numbers wise. And then our CPAC update, November last Monday, not this past Monday, but the Monday before, we had a speaker on anxiety, so that was good. It wasn't highly attended, but it was, it was a good number, better than the month before, and there was really good feedback. Coming up December 2nd, we have a arts and crafts night, and bringing the kids to come to that night, which is great. And also, Justin Smith will be here, the secondary administrator, to do a tour of the life suite so people can see the apartment that's set up, and they can see the work that's been doing, been happening down there. I got to be down there for a bit on Friday, and it was great. The kids set it up the way they wanted. I had one student who loves playing darts, and he was shooting darts and like nailing it every single time, like was so good. Another kid for his leisure had set up like a little mini basketball hoop, and they had picked that up themselves to discover what kind of leisure activities that they like. Other kids were folding laundry, they were really broken up into different spaces, and they spend a good amount of time there when they're not out in the community. So it's pretty great to see, and I would love for people to come and tour that program. So that's CPAC. And then after this, the rest of the meetings are the first Tuesday of the month from 6:30 to 8 o'clock, typically here in the library. If there's a change, we'll post it, like at lecture hall or something like that. And then lastly, I did put a slide up because Molly had spoken to it, but we finished up our unified basketball season, which was great. They had the jamboree on Monday. Unfortunately, I was out sick and I couldn't go, but I heard that it was really successful. And moving forward, we still have some really great inclusive opportunities at the high school, specifically with Life Club, Portuguese Club. We have Homecoming coming up with a lot of our kids attending on Friday, and then Spring Track will be here before you know it, and they'll be doing Unified Sports again come the springtime. So that's just a roundup of student services.
Thank you, Kelly. I was at the jamboree on Monday, and the Lakos were in the house for basketball. Great time, very competitive spirit on the court.
If I may, I just want to add, with Kelly referencing the out of district, when we're talking about the referencing move-ins that I'm referring to are ones that took place after April, after the budget was approved, but before the school year started. So those are where the numbers have affected us.
Thank you, Kelly. Turn things over to the school committee for subcommittee reports.
Right, let's, regional finance committee.
We have a meeting later this month.
Later this month, perfect. Evaluation committee, we just wrapped that up. We'll be looking forward to the summit phase. Wellness and Health Committee, no update at this time?
No update.
No update at this time. Policy Subcommittee, no update at this time. Capital Committee, no update at this time. Pool Committee?
Well, I just have a brief update for tonight. Nothing overly riveting. I'd like to publicly thank Jack for his hard work in putting together his presentation regarding the engineering study that we did receive only a month ago. I'd also like to thank Greg Goodwin. He and Jack met with the pool Subcommittee at the end of October. We did perform a walkthrough of the pool area, as several of us had not been privy to see the disrepair that is there. We deliberated after our walkthrough to bring up some questions or concerns that we had regarding the pool study and regarding what it could entail. We went back and forth with questions, and Jack was gracious enough to circle back to Aquatica and Habib and Associates to try and get some answers for us. Those answers has just come in, in the last day or so. We do have a meeting next week, prior to our meeting Wednesday, where we'll be going over some of the answers that the Aquatica had for us for our questions, because we did bring up some of the, we had concerns regarding some of the recommendations, and with a group of six of us, we wanted to make sure we were all taking the best interest to heart. Also, a quick shout out to Jim Cabusio. He provided us with some links regarding the history of the pool and that area, dating back all the way from 1900s, mainly the mid 90s to more, to more present times with grievances from the teachers, all the way through some of the repairs that happened in the 2010-11 area, all the way through more recently with some of the repairs and disrepairs. That being said, again, we do have a meeting next week. We have asked questions about operation costs. We've looked into and are getting answers, if we don't have them already, regarding our current costs, so we're aware what we're currently spending as a district to not have our pool right here and to rent space, also looking into what other districts are paying for their outsourcing of the pool usage. So we're trying to look at all aspects in a wide range and then try to bring it together. So I don't have answers on operational costs or some of the similar questions, but it is part of our thought process to deliberate on what makes sense for our towns and our schools moving forward regarding the pool, so that we can bring better information to you. We did review the mission and the charge of the pool Subcommittee. So we are all on the same page that we should expect an initial report to the full school committee no later than January with, I think it was January, with a full report by April for the school, for the full school committee.
Great, thank you for that timeline. Thank you for the work on that. And thank you, Jack, and everyone involved in that process. Sort of related to the pool, I had asked Jim this question last time, does our swim team have a pool to swim in yet?
Yes, swimming in Middleborough at the Y.
Oh, perfect. Okay, good. That's it for that discussion. Oh, yes, recognize, first clock.
If I could squeeze this in, just we brought back to the committee that we had a really successful senior citizens breakfast last week. I think the numbers came in about 60.
Oh, wow.
And yeah, it was, it was pretty good. I'd like to thank the food service directors, the cafeteria principal, the eighth grade advisor, the eighth grade students that stout with these seniors and conversed with them, and it kind of helps bridge a generation gap, I think. Everybody had a very good time from my perspective, and I can't wait till I can reach the age to be on the receiving end instead of the serving end. I'm looking forward to that.
As, thank you for the kind words, as always. Perhaps it fits under number seven, too. If you could just reshare, I believe we're hosting a chapter 70.
We are, November 19th here at the high school in the auditorium, and I believe the start time is 4:30.
Okay.
I'll double check that while, while you're voting.
Yeah, and that's open to the public.
That's open to the public.
Great.
Just three quick announcements. I'd just like to remind the public to visit our new community bulletin board located under Parents and Community on the Free Lake site. We often get flyers from local community groups, and that's a good place to post them, so we're encouraging people, trying to drive some traffic there to see the local events. For example, the FLBC reached out to us today about their youth basketball offerings, and that was posted today. So that's a good spot for families to go to connect with some of the great community events that are happening. The community bulletin board, again, under Parents and Community at Free Lake. We'd like to acknowledge Veterans Day. Veterans Day was celebrated in different ways across the district. Two areas of note, Assawamse Elementary held an assembly, which culminated with a flag laying in front of the school. And then FLMS hosted its first inaugural Veterans Day Assembly, and we had a really nice turnout of veterans who came and were honored by our eighth grade students who interviewed them, and it was just a wonderful morning, and I'd like to recognize the principals in both of those buildings who are organizing those events, all of the staff members who were involved, and certainly our veterans who came to allow us to honor them in their service.
Great. Well said, thank you. And I had received some feedback on the work that you did at the schools, and it was very, very positive. So thank you for taking the time to recognize veterans.
That's great, and the last thing we'd like to acknowledge tonight is our Girl Scout Troop 77318, who finally installed, and when I say finally, it was on us, not on them, waiting for us to vote to approve their bird, sorry, butterfly houses. So we'd like to thank the Girl Scout Troop for installing butterfly houses at each of the school. the schools.
Thank you. All right, moving on to action items. These are all majority votes. First up, like to entertain a motion and a vote to accept the resignation of a school committee member, Crystal Ng.
Still moved.
Hearing a second, all those in favor say aye. Oh, any discussion on that?
I just would like to thank Crystal for her time here and serving as a school committee member and for advocate for the children and try to do the right thing. Thank you.
Great. Moving on to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Action item B, entertain a motion to approve DECA overnight out-of-state field trip.
Still moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion passes. Item C, entertain a motion to accept a guitar and some golf clubs donated to ARHS Music and PE Programs.
Still moved.
Hearing a second, any discussion?
I'd like Cam to be able to vote.
Only if it's Titleist. Thank you for your comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion also passes. Item D, a vote to, entertain a motion to accept two gallons of paint donated to FLRSD facilities.
Still moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? Is that the paint Jack will be using?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, that motion also passes. Entertain a motion to approve updated 2025, 2026 school handbooks.
Still moved.
Second. Second.
Hearing a discussion, hearing a second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion also passes. Item F, entertain a motion to adopt the FLRSC Competency Determination Policy IKFE.
Still moved.
Hearing a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Item G, entertain a motion to adopt the FLRSC Graduation Policy IKF.
Still moved.
Second. Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. H, entertain a motion to approve payroll vendor warrants from 10/29/25.
Still moved.
Hearing a second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Finally, item I, entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes from 10/22/25.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I abstained.
One abstention. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item nine, would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, it's 7:30?
7:30 on the dot.
Thank you for the expeditious names.
Anytime. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.